Going to call to order the June sixth Prairie Grove Planning Commission meeting. The first item on the agenda is consideration or approval of minutes from the May ninth, two thousand and twenty four meeting.
And we accept the minutes.
I have a motion and a second. All. There you go. All those in favor say aye. I'll oppose, same sign. All right. Next order of business is the request for a conditional use to sell fireworks at twenty three ninety one Heritage Parkway by Christopher Portillo.
Yeah, come on up there.
And I will say JC has looked over this, our party, and he's okay with everything. He didn't see any problems with that location, so.
Um, what questions would you have on that?
I mean, it's just fireworks stand, right?
Yeah, JC.
I didn't know what specifications that had followed, so I just followed the requirements, which was it had to be fifty feet from the road, had to have fire extinguishers and fire-related equipment and stuff like that signage. They'd have the canopy up a week before the fourth.
He's already submitted his insurance.
Yeah. General liability, uh, already extended to email. I do have a copy here if you guys want to see it, uh, below the application, planning to get the business license, having approval of stand.
Is this a one-time use or is this?
Once, once you approve this location, this location is good unless for some reason, uh, you came back next year, let's say he didn't follow through with what he said he was going to do, you can revoke it. But once you approve this location, it's pretty much a good location.
Are you the landowner then?
I'm not.
He does have permission from the landowner, a written one as well.
Okay.
Now, is it good for, even if he's not the one doing it, if somebody else were to say, hey, I'm going to do it?
We, the stance we've taken in the past is once we've approved the location, we let him go. We don't, we actually don't verify property owners or operators.
I think his churches will often put them in there or let people sit up in.
Right. Basically, you're judging the location.
I mean, does. I mean, it seems like an appropriate location.
There's good parking, there's good access on and off the highway, and JC was fine with that.
One of the requirements, one of the requirements is waste collection, uh, towards like the southern part of the property, there's dumpster there that I think is.
And, and this is on the application, but, uh, once you get set up, you will have to qualify for inspection before you go.
Yeah, there's also like a final inspection before I'm even allowed to sell, so.
This where Moore's is or what?
This is where, what's the name of the plumbing company? Marrow.
Marrow.
It was Marrow, and then there were some little sheds there, and now I'm in there. I primarily use it in my coffee business, Boulder, if you've heard of it, one in Bevill, Rogers. But.
But yeah, you've already got the property that you used to run.
Yeah, yeah.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions or concerns on this?
I make a motion to approve the additional use to sell fireworks at twenty three ninety one Heritage Parkway by Christopher Portillo.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Thank you, sir.
You're good. All right. Next item on our agenda is the request for an amendment to the conditions of the conditional use approval of Legendary Fitness by Emily and Michael Wester.
Come on up.
So I guess, sorry, our conditional approval for business license, uh, masonry on our building, um, and then three foots. And the time, the reason we needed the extension was because we had front-end budgets, um, so we were given a year to black requirements. Um, we recently had our yearly fees come out, so we've been getting votes for all of that, um, to get that kind of complete. And running into some issues with the actual logistics and how to do that, it's nice when talking mostly about that to public contractors.
So we're going to have our contractor here to explain it, uh, because on vacation, I'm like, no.
So we'll do our best with the.
So in order to put up a faux, faux, whatever it is, fake brick, um, there has to be a bar that goes through that lower section and.
Steel bar.
Um, for a mounting point, there's not one there. Um, we did talk to, uh, our previous contractor about this, and they failed to relay it to the. Um, so. The whole front half of that wall has to pretty much come down in order to put a brace back there, uh, which is going to shut us down. And it's almost, it's a very lengthy process from what they said, um, but.
That's the key, but the one way you could do it is try to bend it in the bottom, then you're just bending the whole wall. And also, that's how you do that, start with the box stuff.
So my question.
Cut into it at all, avoids the warranty on the entire building, um, so then you could, the only other option would be to really take the whole wall off.
So is the faux wall supposed to be faux as in foam faux, or I mean, can it be, is, has to be masonry or look like masonry?
I think it was masonry.
Masonry.
Yeah.
It was already.
But it's a, it's like a.
Mason.
Yeah, it's like a thinner, it's like a board.
It's a veneer.
Yeah, it's a veneer. It's not, it's not like the actual brick.
Bricks, right.
It's, it's just out of like a cement type component.
There's art, there's artificial products out there that look like.
Yeah, unfortunately, due to the contractor that we're going to work with, and we have no idea that you needed such a thing, like an attachment or eighth point, now very difficult to do that. So we're here to ask if there's another alternative, so we still accomplish the same mission and having it look nice, since it's the front edge of the building, but not having to completely rip out the walls and possibly shut down for a long period of time.
Not a contractor, but I wonder, uh, I'm not a cost estimator either, but I wonder if it was actually just a brick on the outside of that, because I've seen it before when a, uh, it was a.
A real masonry brick?
Yeah, um, well, we got a price on it.
We already did for that, and can't do it because the footing doesn't come out well enough.
You can, or your own footing though, right?
Well, you have to dig out the asphalt or concrete, and then, because you can't just lay it on the asphalt, it'll sink it.
Right.
Um, so.
Or not to take out the.
That was the one thing I'd seen, it was an automotive place, and when they turned it into a park store with an entrance, the city required them to do the masonry siding three foot up, and so they did have to go on the outside of it and do that. So I've seen it done, I just don't know, I have a price, but I'd see.
We're waiting to get some votes back for, uh.
Larry, Larry, who's coming? I mean, not Larry, is it Larry? Oh.
What's her name, Inspector?
Charlie, okay, yeah.
My question is, I'm going to be in the schedule, and my, the issue department, I've been sent. I'm just wondering about having a low-bearing wall every year. I haven't heard real boring, I've heard that you're going to be knocking out a significant amount of the front wall. Do you guys have an engineer involved in doing this, structural engineer? Because it sounds to me like this is going to need a structural engineer involved more than just a contractor.
But it's still being behind the plate, goes on happening with the front, all of the metal on the front.
So I think you can slip sleeving, you're basically creating another purling inside, right?
Yeah.
So you can, we have a metal building, now we, our place, we didn't require, but for, to make it look nice, ours is foam, we still poured concrete. But I mean, you could either, you just have a saw and you cut up a section of that and put down concrete, and then you can have it self-standing, or create, you're basically four feet at a time, or three feet sheets they are, you have to slide something in behind there and attach it, you know, to, to support whichever way you want to go, but I don't know if I agree with totally ripping the wall out.
Again, that, that, even the way you had said, uh, it's still going to warrant, is going to take the warranty away from the building.
So what exactly are you asking for?
We're completely cool with getting it wrapped or planters or something, something that doesn't take the structure integrity out of my building.
Like we can paint it to look like brick from the roof, or have an actual wrap on it that looks like brick. So they're asking for, I can't remember what the initial like.
Initial, I think, it's not in August, I looked it up.
Prior, and you, do you remember what it read?
Basically, you were requesting a minute, I mean, at least a portion of the highway-facing sign to have masonry up so high, I don't remember what the height was, three or four feet.
Maybe I'm remembering wrong, but did we not?
Something to break up, just the solid.
Did we not talk about, though, allowing some sort of paint or artistic?
It's not in the minutes, I mean, the only thing I remember was a farm, some sort of masonry, I didn't hear of the stone.
Yeah, we had talked about it, but it never got okay in front of me.
I could stay with the masonry, it was just the timeframe.
Yeah.
That was.
Yeah, because originally, we requested it originally with the original plans.
Yeah.
And then that didn't happen, and now, and then we gave them a year to get it done, and now we're back again, basically.
And that's one of the hard things for me, and that's not against y'all, like I said, when, uh, when he came originally, it's that, you know, that was in the codes to have, and then it didn't have, and then it was like, okay, let's give it a time to get it, and then it's like, okay, now, there's another hiccup here, but it's, but it's like, if we, if we allow it with this one, what's the next one? You know what I'm saying? What precedence does it, so it's almost, it stinks for you because you're the one that gets told no first. But if you also get told yes first, then we have to say almost yes several times down the road, and that's one of the deals like with Lowell. That was one of the things that they struggled with, and they actually changed a lot of their codes because it looked very industrial along their road bunch, and that was their money maker. And so they've gone back, and anything that changes now is required to help that, so they just, they got a lot of industrial buildings.
Well, and yeah, I mean, because we wanted it to look like the other ones with the brick.
Yeah.
And that's why we did it.
Even with your, like your storage units, if you notice that one down there has a totally different build because the front faces with all masonry, whereas some of the ones down here don't, and they look totally different, you know, just between the two, and I think that's the goal for everything that was passed. How did they, we all could interchange that, but I think it was important. So that would be the hard thing for me to vote, to change that. How much I can find that a contractor who can give me another option. Because like they're cutting the concrete, pouring the concrete, I mean, it's tough, it's a lot of work for someone, or it's a lot of money for someone. But I know, I know of businesses that have done it to get their business license, that's the, the other part of it.
I think my thought is, what, is there anything else that would make that look less industrial? Whether it be four-foot-high planters that run a lot across the entire front, or, uh, like they said, a wrap that could mimic, I mean, we see artists do really cool things on buildings, and it becomes a focal point of the town. Uh, so I'm, I'm not dead set on it being brick, or that it's got to be something.
You know, this is a question you don't have to ask, what kind of money are you thinking about?
Like to, to do it, I think we had.
I mean, I don't know how y'all would feel about a mural looking like that.
That's what I'm saying, is they can do something really cool, I think, for.
There are some murals out there that could do it.
Well, probably less than, even.
I don't think that too.
Now, are we talking about drawing a mural or drawing, making brick, drawing bricks?
Well, to me, I don't see a mural as something more revealing.
Well, I mean, I know, but originally it was to look, it was to look like everything else, the reason, the reason we did this. And so now we're going back and getting rid of everything that we said we were.
I think one of the things that y'all were interested in, you just didn't want that one metal aside.
And the only reason I asked that earlier is because I know we talked about Valerie, like someone like Valerie being an option. I, I don't want to ever see a small business be wiped out because we're asking them to spend whatever on, i- if this is to put them over the edge, that's not good business practice for us or them.
However, it should have been done on the front lawn.
Yes.
And then we gave them another year, and it should have been, and it should have been done then too.
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree with all of that, I don't think we can say it's fine for nothing to happen, but I think as long as, in my mind, if the mural that's on fifty-four seven-nine were on the front of this building, it would look awesome, and I would have zero complaints. But that could just, I mean, that could just be me, y'all could disagree, but I think if we got something cool and looked up there, and for five thousand dollars, they can definitely get something.
Well, it, that was, because it.
Well, that was their budget for them. And this is. They're even gonna just look like brick, so.
The faux brick, I would, I would still have a problem myself.
Yeah, I think it would look bad on that.
Because even with Valerie's house, that looked really good, but it's not a depression, it's on the strip, that's, you drive by it, I don't take your kids to school, you know, you're not really looking.
What about faux brick meaning like foam or something like that, or it may not have the same longevity that obviously masonry and something like that, but.
One of them is just too, like, they call it weight throw, I just got some other metal buildings that are just too dumb.
So I understand, you know, avoiding the warranty, however, it is something you could do. Or maybe it's a way you could, you could have it done freestanding instead, but, but.
I was saying, the brick wall would be freestanding if it had its own footing, that's what I was thinking.
It's not, because, um, you can't have it, you have to have it pretty close to the building, and then you have to have a, um, so you have to cause a sleeve into the wall and have kind of a lean to, so the wall doesn't get behind the brick and stands pretty well, collecting stuff.
On the top, on the top of the wall, it's got to have some.
And unless you had something that follows the contour of the metal and has beetle tape or something like that, and every ten years or something, you may have to replace the beetle tape, that's an option too.
Yeah, because typically they put something underneath the siding.
Yeah, it's longer lasting that way, for sure.
And that's what it would be, like I said, have to come down, cut it.
I mean, I'm willing to give more time for more options, maybe, or.
Maybe if we had something to, like, to your point of mural, which.
Present us something?
I'm kind of like, I, I don't know, but at the same time, if I had something in front of me, it'd be easier to say, yeah, that makes more sense. Because now I'm like, I'm afraid if I said yes to it, it could end up, not, not, but I'm saying, if I, yeah, it said it, maybe like a brick, then you can feel like a little tiger, you know, like.
Right.
It's still just, it's the brick, it's not, it's not anything that I would know right now, it could be hard to vote on a.
Right, just to say.
Yeah, go for it. Because in the end, like that's, um, kind of, it's like, that is the code, it was the code, go for a reason. It's easier to stick with it if you don't ever go against it, but if you go against it, but what are we going to allow next time? And that's the hard part, because it's not, it's not you, it's the twenty businesses that come after.
Right, I get the question, was that like building for everybody, or was it just because we didn't have a determination for a gym in the B two seven? Everyone on the highway frontage right now is having to do non-industrial work on the highway frontage, any new buildings. So that's why Gabby's looks like that, that's what storage units are looking the way they do, we don't want the bypass to be full of industrial warranty buildings, or fine if they're.
And actually, if you had built today, you would have had to hire an engineer, because the direct actually require every project to go through large-scale, so you got, luckily you got in before the rule date. If you did it today, you have fire and air to blow up.
I'm sure.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's for the whole, anything commercial now, along that clue.
We didn't like have a plan, sure, follow it, so, sure. What if we give them a three-month extension for them to bring back?
Well, they've got until August, right?
Well, is that when it's?
Year last.
I'd suggest they come back next month with some options, you might want to talk to our COVID official, Dr. Troy, he might have some suggestions, he may not, I don't know, but, uh, he's, uh, he's seen just about every time a building there is, um. Troy, can I offer you? He, he might have some kind of thoughts or some.
Yeah.
You might, yeah, I probably not do everything in my house, you know, it's like, helps, give me something to work with, too, right?
So I'm going to make a motion that we table this until, and ask that y'all come back before August with, and get with the six-year or some sort of idea, and present us with either, uh, what we ask for, or a new option that we can be more confident about.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Is anyone here? Comments?
A meeting next month, July, it's not on Monday, it's not, because of the fourth, fourth, third.
All in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, we will see y'all next month.
Thank you all.
All right, next item on the agenda, conditional use for George Ferris to display and sell storage buildings in an M U B two-zone at ten eighteen Walnut Grove.
I think I'll, you know, where this location is probably, we use right at the corner of, uh, Walnut Grove Road, it used to be Highway one seventy, a little longer, but. Uh, M U B two-zone to be able to have that type of business, as far as it be conditionally approved, so that's why they're here tonight. And go ahead and just kind of describe to them what your business model is and what will be at the moment.
Basically, what I've done is, um, I have partnered with, uh, two different companies to do portable buildings, wood and metal. Um, all that lot is, is a display lot, there's no kind of work or anything done on it there, and they may have to erect a building there if they bring a metal down, uh, have to get it wrecked aside. But other than that, that's, that's all that's going to be happening. Uh, I have the building, the last four days, I have completely redone the inside of the building, I have fresh roasty outside with, we've done a bunch of landscaping and stuff around, get it cleaned up, and.
And didn't you tell me you'd be repairing, uh, storm shelters as well?
There, there'll be one storm shelter, displace, and one septic tank, displace, and that's just basically because the people that buy these buildings and such, they need those things too, and they're, they're just be there for them to look at and go. And that, that, that has not definitely been set for sure, but they told me yesterday that they felt like that they could rent some other display, that's, that's what.
It's like it's been jumped at the morning, so.
No.
It's been nine hundred other things.
Yeah.
Is there any differences between this and what we've approved right down the road?
On the other, on the other side of the car lot?
Approved at least two or three of these just down the road within the last three years, so.
Yeah, is there any differences as far as like, et cetera, X, and what they're asking for and what they're displaying?
No, it's actually bigger law, and I think you are planning a manned facility at this one, right? So they'll actually need somebody at this facility, or some of the others don't actually have somebody on site, sign that says following, so. I think that's an advantage, having somebody on site.
And the new codes haven't changed anything as far as requirement or.
He's got paid parking, which is the requirement.
Said paid parking.
Yeah, there is paid, some paid parking there.
Any, anyone in the audience have any comments or concerns?
Move to bro.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, you're good.
Like, he must have thought it's going to be pretty rough, maybe, because he brought his bodyguard. I told him, I said, I would go back to how this is going to go, you're going to go with it. Thank you, guys, appreciate you.
All right, we are going to switch over to our Board of Adjustments, we have a fence variance request, request for, from Felipe and Patricia Melendez to appeal specific requirements from the fence ordinance at two oh five, two oh four East Grand Street.
And I think this is pretty simple, but our fence requirements are pretty specific, they, they say where fence can be, how it has to be as far as easements are concerned, and which direction it has to face, so if you build a privacy fence around your backyard, you have to face the nice side of the fence out, uh, where other people can see it. A lot of people don't like to do that for obvious reasons, they want the pretty side facing their houses they're paying for, that's not the direction. Uh, in this case, I think they've got a pretty valid reason for wanting to reverse it, but I can't approve it in my office, even though I think it is valid, right? So the only option they have is to go to the Board of Justice and ask for variance on fence. Uh, in this case, they're playing a privacy fence around the back, and there's already an existing, help me here, why don't you just go ahead and tell them what you're planning regarding existing chain link fence?
Yeah, we have an existing fence right now that's, uh, in the way of us, even if we do want to get the picket fence, we can't screw.
It's on the neighbors' property.
Yeah, the wood on it because of the big fence, and on this opposite side, the growth is just like way too big, and so. The only way to put a fence there is to nail it or screw it from the inside, then.
And you're actually leaving some portion of other fence there because the chain link is actually fastened through, right?
It depends on the other side, it's folded down to the chain, so we can't remove it, because what we're doing there.
So the old wooden fence is actually fastened to the chain link holding it up.
That's pretty impressive.
So they're planning on building a new fence to block, to block that view, basically.
There you go.
But they need to face it to the inside because they don't access to the other side.
So the growth on the, what, east side?
Yeah, so the east side and, and some of the rear end, which is the north side, is growth, you know, growth, and then on the north side, it's, on the east side, they have that picket fence.
And show?
So, yeah, I'm saying north is on the backside, and, uh, east is on your right, left, so.
They're actually planning a very pretty ornamental fence all the way around the front, the fence, nothing required here for that, so.
Now, we want to put a fancy, fancy one up, with a gate remote, you know, that makes it better.
If someone decided to remove all.
I'm all for making it harder.
From their lot. Would there be, maybe it may never happen, uh, would it be an issue?
In, in this case, I don't think the neighbor cares much about the way it looks anyway, based on what's already there.
They're telling us that if, if you want to remove, you move it.
So there have already been some discussions between the neighbors, don't want to participate in this.
Well, it's hard to say no to somebody that's just trying to beautify their home or make it better, you know what I mean?
I don't see that in law, too, and they built that fence beside.
There's been, there's like no way for me to fasten anything from the other side of the fence.
Nothing we've ever said or done.
Now, is that fence going to be that way just on one side of the property facing them, or all the way around is going to be?
I think even, I think your fence is.
This is fact.
The front's going to be ornamental, iron.
Because of the obstacles and the inability, maybe, as long as they were notified or asked to involve, it kind of eliminates the right in a way.
The reason for variance is if there's an inherent hardship, and I think you can classify.
This one's not like it's world-class.
Well, and obviously the neighbors don't care, they're saying, do it, you know, go for it.
Do we have any comments or concerns from the audience? Yes, sir.
I think one of the neighbors have been, uh, by, yeah.
Yes, you know, by everybody around us.
As long as that was formal, probably, that might.
I know, why they would put a fence, the inside, nice side, or this yard, it's like.
Probably didn't call for inspection is my guess, but I, I mean, I don't know, that's been too long. Probably didn't call for inspection is my yes, but I, I mean, I don't know, that's been too long. He probably didn't call for inspection, it's probably.
I make motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Nice. All right, great emotion, you do it, Jerry.
And reminder, it's an odd day. Monday, the eighth, next meeting.
Oh, I thought you said.
Because the work is on a Thursday.